Did you guys reorganize?
No.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna reorganize first.
Call the meeting to order.
I'll call a planning board meeting to order and the first issue will be the reorganization. Does anyone have any nominations?
I would nominate Mr. James Roethser as chairman.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
I nominate Paul Kosky as vice chairman.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do need to announce that we are, we're going out live tonight. We're being recorded outside of the broadcast and we need to ask if anyone in the audience is making a recording just now. The, um, I don't know how you wanna do this.
Jim, you did an advertisement. She just, she just did.
I just recorded, recorded. Um, for the Conservation Commission, is there a motion, this is a continued public hearing on the notice of intent filed by Masad Family LLC for project thirty-four and fifty-eight Avenue. Conservation, is there a motion to reopen our hearing?
I'll make a motion to reopen.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, I'll vote.
Now, we're gonna reopen on that. Same meeting. All right, is there a motion to reopen the meeting on Masad?
There's a motion to reopen the meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here's the vote.
Okay, from where we started, from the last joint planning board Conservation Commission meeting, um, Conservation Commission had voted to hire Washburn Wetland Consulting to do a peer review. She made a report, she was unavailable for that meeting, she is here this evening with us. Um, since that time, her report has been reviewed by Waterman Design and they have made a rebuttal to that. And I think that was shared in the planning board packets as well as Conservation packets out over the weekend. And Margaret has prepared a report that we're just getting tonight, I have copies for everybody. But I didn't know if Waterman wanted to make a summary statement on the findings before Margaret presents her report this evening. So whatever, if you're okay with that, Mr. Roethser.
Yeah.
So what's your plan then? Do you wanna, do you wanna discuss your findings on Margaret's report or do you wanna just have Margaret present her latest?
Oh, we were just handed the report. Is that my first report or the one?
The first report.
First.
Because we haven't had a meeting since you were last here and you responded and we've all had it through the mail. I didn't know if you'd prefer to make a statement.
Well, I think we can sum it up pretty briefly, sure.
Okay, all right.
For the record, I'm Michael Scott, I'm an engineer at Waterman Design Associates and I'm here on behalf of the Masad family. And then, this is Brian Waterman, he's our wetland specialist and also with Waterman Design. Thank you, Brian was here last time on his own and I was here the meeting before. I mean, the easiest way to put it is we, as a result of the first, both the DEP and the first review by Ms. Washburn, there were some requests for additional information. So at that time, the Masad family contracted with Ecotec and us to continue providing some supplemental information. Waterman Design was responsible for making some plan revisions and providing some additional information to Ms. Washburn for her review. Ecotec was contracted to perform a wildlife habitat assessment and then the wetland construction protocol that would then be followed in the field by a contractor. And we coordinated with Ecotec, we revised our plans, which then Ms. Washburn has reviewed and has provided a report as of today to reflect the findings of Ecotec as well as some of the comments that we, that we received from Ms. Washburn initially. And I think our letter is fairly straightforward, there was some discussion about quantities of, or the length of bank that was going to be altered as part of the proposal, which of course is to put the road essentially through the area that was constructed as a wetland for a previous project. As well as new alteration of wetlands, of an existing wetland area. So we talked quite a bit with Margaret about the quantities of both the created wetland and the existing wetland, the created bank and the replicated bank, as well as future losses of the existing bank. And tried to put that all in the plans based, plus, and as I said, incorporate comments, information that we received from Ecotec relative to their findings.
Okay.
That, that probably sums it up, we've issued the new plans, Margaret's had a chance to look at them and I think that's what she gets now.
Okay, and then, you know, unfortunately in the summertime, everybody was on vacation and I know Margaret got the documentation and we just, she got, she wanted everything by last Wednesday so that she had an opportunity to review it. And her report is just up and I think, pardon me, she just gave you a copy of it and it is pretty lengthy, but I do have copies, I hope for enough for everyone, of Margaret's latest report. And then, if it's all right with Kim and Roethser, I'd like to ask Margaret Washburn, our wetlands consultant, to explain this latest review by her.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So Ms. Washburn, you have the floor.
I'm Margaret Washburn, I'm from Washburn Wetland Consulting, does it matter if I sit down or stand up?
I think it might be easier if you stood.
Okay.
There's a lot of people in here.
I'm not gonna read this whole thing verbatim, but it is about ten pages and so I'm going to go through it with you so that I know that you can't sit out a meeting and have a ten-page document handed to you and be expected to read it while I talk. Um, I'm gonna try to put a positive spin on this project right from the get-go in that I think that Waterman Design can get there from here as far as relocating Faith Ave. Um, but they're gonna have to do, go back to the drawing board and do a little bit more work and I'll, I'll explain why. Um, I, first part of my letter on page one, I referenced the documents that I received on July seventeenth. And in my introduction, I state that, um, the notice of intent filed by WDA, Waterman Designs proposes that two thousand square feet of bordering vegetated wetland or BVW alteration is proposed, while they're proposing six thousand square feet of replacement of BVW. And in my opinion, the form should have stated that six thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of BVW alteration is proposed, since the plan shows the filling of an additional four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of BVW that was created by Ecotec when they did their wetland replication as-built plan as of ten twenty-six eleven. So at your request, I had previously assessed the Ecotec replication areas on June eighteenth and my assessment revealed that the replication areas are functioning as wetlands. Um, they now consist of a BVW. Uh, the detailed wildlife habitat submitted by Scott Jordan of Ecotec also supports this assessment and it refers to the Ecotec replication areas as man-made wet meadow shrub swamp. So when a wetland is evaluated, it's evaluated as a snapshot in time. On June eighteenth, the replication areas were wetlands in my opinion. It doesn't matter how or why they were created, a BVW is a BVW whether it's man-made or natural, as long as it fits the definition of a BVW in three-ten CMR ten fifty-five two A. Uh, the man-made wet meadow shrub swamps fit the definition in that they border on a stream, the soils are saturated or inundated enough so that they supported dominance of wetland indicator plants. In accordance with three-ten CMR ten fifty-five four B, the issuing authority may issue an order of conditions permitting work which results in the loss of up to five thousand square feet of BVW when said area is replaced. This is completely discretionary. Discretionary filling of more than five thousand square feet of BVW is not allowable unless it's a limited project as per three-ten CMR ten fifty-three. The existing Ecotec replication areas cannot be altered until a certificate of compliance is issued. If necessary, this could be accomplished through an issuance of a partial certificate of compliance for only that portion of the work. It should be noted that while six thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of BVW alteration is proposed, only six thousand square feet of replication is proposed. And for this reason, the proposed project does not meet the general performance standard three-ten CMR ten fifty-five four B one. The surface of the replication area to be created shall be equal to that of the area that will be lost. It should also be noted that five hundred and seventy-five square feet of BVW were previously filled on the site. The total of five thousand square feet permissible minus the previously filled five hundred and seventy-five square feet leaves a total of four thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet of possible future BVW filling. WDA should submit revised notice of intent forms to the commission and the DEP with revised sizes of proposed BVW alteration and BVW replacement listed on page two of eight. Uh, now I start in with reviewing the alternatives analysis and the, when you're reviewing wetland impacts, the first priority is to avoid impacts. The second is to minimize impacts if they cannot be avoided and the third priority is to mitigate for unavoidable impacts. Since a maximum total area of four thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet of BVW can potentially be filled on the subject property in the future, the applicant should redesign the project to avoid and minimize impacts. If the applicant can bring in a plan showing up to four thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet of BVW filling, a permit can be issued. As I recall during the approval of the HS&amp;T group plans in two thousand and eleven, there was some discussion at that time about relocating the loop portion of Faith Ave if the applicant could acquire it. If the applicant had considered the project in its entirety, including the service facility as it currently exists, along with the relocation of Faith Ave, then perhaps this project could have been completed, one NOI, while keeping the discretionary wetland impact at less than the five thousand square feet total limit that the commission is allowed to permit. Although the applicant rejected the no-build alternative, it would further, it would avoid further wetland impacts. To their credit, the applicant considered purchasing land to the west of the property in order to span the wetlands at a narrow point. Since the abutting landowners couldn't negotiate the sale of land, this alternative can no longer be considered. The second alternative, relocation of the road east of the preferred alternative, should be revisited. If the proposed road could be moved just far enough to the east to reduce the impacts to four thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet, then a permit could be issued. It's true that some of the parking area would be lost, but a great deal of space would be gained by the removal of the loop of Faith Ave. Also, that would actually leave more room to replicate if they moved the road slightly further to the east. A total of one thousand and thirty square feet less of wetland replication area would be required and perhaps some of that space could be used for parking. A compromise could be struck by which the applicant could still relocate Faith Ave while reducing wetland impacts to an acceptable level. If retaining walls are necessary, they can be constructed in such a way as to minimize public safety concerns through the use of railings and so forth. The preferred alternative maximizes wetland disturbance to the point that it's too large for a permit to be issued as proposed. In the preferred alternatives narrative, WDA claims that only two thousand square feet of BVW will be altered while offering to mitigate six thousand square feet. In other words, they're willing to propose six thousand square feet of replication, but they seem unwilling to concede to altering six thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of BVW. In the preferred alternative analysis, wetland, I'm sorry, Waterman Design refers to transplanting the Ecotec replication area instead of calling it filling. The plan shows the filling of four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of man-made wet meadow shrub swamp. WDA state that the applicant has indicated that the preferred alternative best serves their long-term need. The plan should be revised so the applicant's needs are met while meeting the provisions of three-ten CMR ten fifty-five. The third alternative, relocation of the road with a bridge, should also be revisited. WDA state that a span of roughly sixty feet would be required to avoid direct wetland alteration. While avoidance of alteration is desirable, it's not necessary. A shorter span could be used as long as the wetland impacts stayed under four thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet. Waterman Design states that WDA did not consider the value of the wetland resource in question to outweigh the negative impacts or significant costs associated with the bridge. Therefore, this alternative had been rejected. A shorter bridge span might theoretically lower the cost of a bridge. Okay, now I talk about the wildlife habitat evaluation review. In general, I think they did, uh, Scott Jordan of Ecotec did an excellent job. I take exception to the one statement in the habitat evaluation which comes under the heading of reducing the alteration on page six. Mr. Jordan states that the project applicant has determined that the proposed project is the most economically feasible alternative that would reduce impacts to the recently constructed wetland mitigation area or the natural BVW area and its associated stream channels. The preferred alternative does not reduce impacts. Of all the alternatives considered, it maximizes impacts to wetland resource areas. So it's not clear to me whether Mr. Jordan read Waterman's alternative analysis. Um, Mr. Jordan also makes mitigation recommendations, including planting speckled alder and common winter berry instead of the proposed sweet copper bush. It should also be noted that the habitat evaluation lists willows and elderberries as dominant plant species in the natural BVW, but neither of these species is included in the list of plant material proposed by WDA. So I'm recommending that native willows and elderberries are, could be incorporated into the list of planting material, especially as willows grow very fast in sunny replication areas. Now I'm going to start in on my response to Waterman's review, uh, response to my review letter. There bullet number one, talking about the existing replication area assessment. In regards to the discussion about knotweed and other invasives, please refer to my attached letter, August, dated August third, two thousand and eleven, that's on the back of this document. And I quote from it here. "I reviewed Ecotec's mitigation protocol and recommended, among other things," basically what I, I did was I said that they didn't actually put a monitoring schedule in and I suggested that they should do some monitoring during two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve and into two thousand and thirteen. And I'm not sure whether any monitoring was ever done, whether the commission ever got any reports. As I recall, Ecotec had agreed to do some monitoring, but I don't know what happened between now and then. Um, if monitoring had been conducted and the reports had been submitted, the invasives should have been handpicked and the commission should have some record of the reports. Um, if the monitoring and handpicking had been done, um, haven't been done, that these activities should start immediately and continue until a certificate of compliance is issued. I suggest a monitoring schedule here and mention it's important to monitor the side slopes of the replication area and surrounding areas if the knotweed is to be controlled. WDA recommended that the applicant should have their landscape contractor control the knotweed outside the replication area. I think that knotweed control should begin immediately and be repeated twice if necessary during this growing season to prevent the knotweed from going to seed, which usually happens in October. I agree with Waterman's knotweed control program and I think monitoring reports should include dates documenting when handpicking by a wetland specialist and/or treatments by the pesticide applicator. Um, Waterman's recommendations regarding the other invasive should be followed and monitoring reports should also include when those were handpicked or treated. Okay, Waterman Design's response letter, bullet number two, proposed wetland alteration assessment. Okay, Waterman refers to the relocation of four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of the Ecotec replication areas. So the intent is to fill the four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of man-made shrub swamp and wet meadow in addition to the two thousand feet of natural BVW. Um, my opinion is that Waterman Design's assertion that the Ecotec Inc. replication areas don't consist of wetland resource area because, quote, "It was constructed less than two years ago, is still under a valid order and has not yet been accepted by the issuance of a certificate of compliance as a moot point." The replication areas are now BVWs, more specifically man-made wet meadow shrub swamp according to Ecotec. Uh, Waterman Design also states that they believe that the shrub, um, man-made shrub swamp wet meadow could be relocated with, um, the meaning filled with permission from the commission. But the problem is they're proposing to fill six thousand one hundred and thirty square feet and due to previous filling on the site, the maximum amount the issuing authority could permit now is four thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet. In my opinion, Waterman Design's assertion that the replication area was not required is a moot point. The four thousand one hundred and thirty foot, uh, square foot replication area was voluntarily constructed as mitigation for the previous five thousand hundred, five, sorry, five hundred and seventy-five square feet of BVW filling and to accommodate the required bank mitigation. Whether required or voluntary, there are now four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of man-made shrub swamp wet meadow constituting a BVW. Waterman Design submits that this is not a new alteration. I disagree, I think the filling of the two thousand square feet of natural BVW is, is a new alteration and I believe that the filling of the man-made shrub swamp also is new. Uh, neither of these wetland resource areas have been filled before. Okay, Ecotec addressed the general performance standard number five, I'm now at the top of page six, and three-ten CMR ten fifty-four regarding bank, since they propose to disturb more than fifty linear feet of bank. However, Waterman Design should provide a detailed narrative explaining one by one how their project meets the other general performance standards, number one through four. For example, they need to document and describe the physical stability of the bank in the natural BVW they propose to alter. How high is the bank, what's the range of heights of the bank, what's the average height of the bank, what are the physical characteristics of the bank? As in, what percent of the bank's covered by stones, roots, woody debris? How will the newly created stream channels recreate these characteristics? Uh, Waterman Design should provide a detailed narrative explaining one by one how their project meets the general conditions in three-ten CMR ten sixty-three. Waterman Design states that the applicant can ask the commission to allow relocation of the replication area through an amendment to the current order. I refer to Masda EP policy statement, Wetlands Program Policy eighty-five dash four, that states that amendments are only appropriate when changes sought are relatively minor and will have unchanged or less impacts on the interests of the act. The policy also states relatively minor impacts are appropriate for amendments. The proposed wetland impacts are not minor deviations from the project approved in the existing order and I, I feel that an amendment to the current order would not be a valid way to permit this project. Waterman Design state that, oh, they agree that if the existing replication area is viewed as a wetland resource, the total alteration would be beyond the five thousand square feet. And unless the project qualified as a limited project, it couldn't be permitted by the local commission and that's exactly the point of why the project can't be, uh, permitted as proposed. Uh, Waterman Design state that they don't believe that much would be gained by installing monitoring wells in the proposed replication area. Exactly what would be gained is information regarding the depths to seasonal high groundwater and that should be required whenever a replication area is proposed. Deep test pits could accomplish the same goal. There's concern about the fact that at least two portions in the proposed replication area have been previously excavated for the installation of propane tanks in the foundation of the house that was, that used to be there. Deep test pits would confirm the depth to seasonal high groundwater and whether the foundation of the house is still there. If the foundation is still there, what impact might this foundation have on the success of the proposed replication area? Um, the seasonal high water table in Canton soils, which is what Scott Jordan refers to in his habitat evaluation, the soils on the site there. The seasonal high groundwater table in Canton soils is commonly at a depth of more than six feet. The permeability of the Canton soils is, um, rapid in the substratum. So the depth to seasonal high water table and the rapid permeability of the substratum, meaning the deepest horizon on the soil, are two good reasons for the commission to require data obtained from the observation of deep test pits in the proposed replication area. The general construction sequence has been revised according to my requests. The proposed work no longer includes altering in seventy linear feet of bank and the armoring of the first thirty linear feet of bank in an, the intermittent stream in the natural BVW. Uh, the plan should still be revised to show the buffer zone as one hundred feet away from the man-made shrub swamp and wet meadow. A certificate of compliance is not required to revise the plans accordingly. Getting into point number three in the Waterman response letter, I refer to the Massachusetts inland replication, uh, inland wetland replication guidelines, just saying that they should give us some information, including horizons and characteristics of the soil in the existing BVW, especially redoxing orbit features or remodeling. We should have some kind of schedule for the collection, stockpiling and placement of soils if stockpiling is gonna take place or are they just going to remove the soil straight out of the wetland and put it into the new hole? They should state that. Um, any good replication plan should include a detailed description of the soil morphology in the alteration area. So once again, I'm getting into the idea of, um, getting us some soils data, both in the replication area and the proposed alteration area. Talking about test pits and why they're needed. It's the only way to know in advance what the final elevation of the replication area should be in order to ascertain the depth of the seasonal high water table will be the same in the replication area as it is in the alteration area. Um, as previously stated, the wetland replication protocol submitted by Waterman Design is a portion of the proposed wetland mitigation protocol dated June thirty, two thousand and eleven, originally submitted to Auburn Conservation Commission by Ecotec Inc. for the previously constructed wetland mitigation areas on the subject property. Um, the wetland replication construction detail on sheet seven states that the wetland replication to be in accordance with the construction protocol section of the wetland mitigation protocol prepared by Ecotec Inc. The commission should require Waterman Design to prepare their own replication protocol to be specific to their project. The wetland replication plan prepared by Waterman Design does not follow the replication protocol prepared by Ecotec in various ways. The protocol prepared by Ecotec states that the saplings will be planted around the perimeter of the mitigation area approximately five feet from the outer edge of the replication area. Some of the saplings in the Waterman Design plan are thirty to forty-five feet from the edge of the mitigation area. If left the way it is, the contractor will not know whether to plant the saplings five feet or forty-five feet from the edge of the replication area. Either the protocol should be changed or the plan should be changed. Another way that the replication plan doesn't match the Ecotec protocol is that Ecotec protocol states that the shrubs will be planted more than ten feet from the edge of the mitigation area. But, um, the, this Waterman Design plan shows some of the shrubs very close to the edge of the wetland, within ten, the outer ten feet, including especially near the retaining wall. Another way that the wetland replication plan from Waterman Design doesn't follow the wetland replication protocol from Ecotec is that the Ecotec protocol states shrubs may be planted near but not within the proposed stream channels. The seven seventeen thirteen Waterman Design plan shows shrubs planted within the stream channel close to the retaining wall. Um, Waterman also has some what plants in what looks like rows and the Ecotec intent, I believe, was to have shrubs planted in clumps of three to four. So there's nothing in the Ecotec Inc. protocol referring to logs, boulders, woody debris or micro pools or intermittent cooling areas. So the timing and placement of these need to be discussed in a, in a Waterman Design protocol designed specifically for this project. Ecotec's habitat evaluation recommends the application of woody stick and limb debris throughout the floor of the replication area. This should be discussed in a Waterman protocol. How much woody debris, what will it consist of, how will it be spread and what, at what point during the construction of the replication area? Um, a narrative appendix should be submitted to the revised NOI filing describing in detail how the replication area meets each of the seven general performance standards for replacement of bordering vegetated wetlands in three-ten CMR ten fifty-five four B one through seven. According to DEP's replication guidelines, we need some soil profile information in both replication and, uh, alteration area. A detailed sched, oh, this, I'm sorry, this is, um, I already discussed this stuff. Revised Waterman Design site plan review on page, halfway down page nine. The two seventeen thirteen, uh, February Waterman Design plan showed proposed alteration and armoring of an intermittent stream, um, in the natural BVW. The February Waterman Design site plan showed four hundred and seventy linear feet of bank replication, including that proposed alteration and armoring in the natural BVW. The length of that proposed channel in the natural BVW was approximately seventy linear feet. As previously stated, the bank replication in the BVW is no longer proposed on the new July seventeenth Waterman plan. The July seventeenth Waterman plan shows four hundred and thirty linear feet of bank replication, but the four hundred and seventy or linear feet of bank replication on the February plan minus the seventy linear feet of bank replication leaves four hundred linear feet. And the July plan should be revised to show four hundred linear feet instead of four hundred and, um, instead of what it shows right now. So I talked to Brian and, um, Mike Scott about this in the last couple of days and they agree with that. Um, also, the July seventeenth Waterman plan shows one hundred and sixty-nine linear feet of bank alteration in the natural BVW. After speaking to Brian and Michael Scott over the phone, we determined that this one hundred and sixty-nine linear feet measurement also included thirty linear feet of bank disturbance in the natural BVW. And so the plan should be revised to show one hundred and thirty-nine linear feet instead of one sixty-nine. of one sixty-nine. I think Waterman Design should submit revised NOI forms with revised sizes of proposed bank alteration and replacement. And then, I go on to discuss some details on sheet seven, the replication area, roadway cross-section, and the wetland replication construction detail. Neither of those are to scale. Revised details to scale should be submitted. I think that they should make a couple of cross-sections in the natural BVW to show the change in grade and direction, in parallel to the flow of water, and another cross-section per, perpendicular to the flow of water. Then, the proposed design replication area should be designed to simulate the contours recreating the two cross-sections made in the natural BVW. I've attached a detail from a plan where the replication area was designed to scale based on seasonal high groundwater observed in deep test pits for them to use as an example if they would like to use that, just take a peek at that. And in conclusion, I, I think if Waterman can submit revised plans showing the filling kept down to four thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet, a permit can be issued by the commission. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. I noticed an awful lot of information that was thrown out.
You read it wonderful.
Oh, thanks. She didn't read it verbatim, though. I guess, the commission, are there, are there questions from, did you have any initial impressions you wanted to?
Sure, I mean, I won't spend that much time.
I mean, I know you can't.
Well, I think, I think you can boil it down to about three things. One, it's pretty clear we don't agree on, you know, simple things like, we don't agree that the four thousand square feet or forty-one hundred square feet, whatever the quantity be, constitutes alteration, and therefore, we filed as we did. Completely agree that the two thousand square feet that, has been there forever, that would be altered by the road constitutes new alteration, and, and therefore, when we do our math, we end up around six thousand, six thousand sixty-one hundred, doesn't matter. If that number, if the commission believes that's the number, we completely agree that the commission doesn't have the authority to approve that type of project unless it can be demonstrated that it's a limited project, which I wouldn't, which I wouldn't argue. We just don't agree with that, you know, that, that whole premise. So, that's, that's one point, and that pretty much means the rest of the points are moot. The detail stuff, some of the plan comments, I won't waste our ti, waste your time, but we feel that the plan is actually very consistent with the protocol that Ecotec developed specific to this site. I think perhaps Ms. Washburn wasn't, maybe wasn't seeing somebody that mentioned quite right. There's the whole wetland there, it hasn't even forty-five feet wide, so there certainly could be spacing of trees forty-five feet. Those are minor details, I mean, the big detail is where the big issue is. If the town is of the mind, the commission is of the mind, that the wetland that's been created and is sitting there today, and the relocation of that is actually filling of that, and therefore, the total is over five thousand, doesn't really seem like there's much more worth talking about. So, you know, we've revised the masses of that from day one, but that was certainly a viable, you know, end result or possible end result as far as the commission was concerned, even though we don't agree, and we advised on that, that one option would be to allow you to vote one way or the other, and then they could take it up with DEP if they didn't like your decision. Another option would be to look at moving the road, which, as we stated in all the applications, they weren't keen on because they don't believe it's justifiable without asking for what's before you now. And then clearly, of course, they could just take the no build approach and, and walk away, and then they would be obligated to restore the site in some way to meet some of the zoning and planning requirements with respect to open space or rather, the maximum effervious, effectively what we discussed during the amendment to the existing order, whereby they would tear some of the pavement off, they would, they would finish up the project as it sits today, and you'd essentially have what's, what's out there today. So, you know, I guess at this point, David Massey's not here, I don't think Joe Symonds is in a position to offer that they would consider relocating the road as a, as a way to, I guess, get past the vote on what you have in front of you. So, I think we need to discuss it with Mr. Massey, and, you know, unless.
Well, I'd like to see if, if board members have questions, and I'm sure the planning board members may, may want to ask a question, too.
I have a question, I guess, mostly related to timing. It would seem to me that if they withdraw the application and it's denied, and then they reapply for a new certificate, that's a lengthy process that would push back, obviously the planning board decision until after that, is that correct? I guess my question would be, if the road was revised to get pushed so it was less than four thousand four hundred and eighty square feet of, of impact, and they were able to then create additional replication area which would improve that, would that change the scheme of being a limited project or whatever the terminology was?
It wouldn't be a limited project, it would have to be filed, it would have to be filed as a normal project.
An amendment, I guess, is what I was asking.
I think we would, I guess my thought on that would be that we would revise the plan under the present application, and likewise, we'd, we'd provide that plan to the planning board, of course, because of the new road alignment, new lots and so forth.
Right.
If the town could see fit to allow that adjustment, you know, assuming that's the way the masses want to proceed, as a, as part of the present filing, then I think we would continue hearing. I presume Ms. Washburn and Graves would go back and revisit everything, and we could start this over with a perhaps far less contentious discussion over the wetlands, whether they are or aren't wetlands. But I'm not sure what the conservation commission would feel about that, I was just curious if that was something that would limit those impacts to make the amendment possible, because there would be additional replication area possible and, and less required.
I think any decision we make is held at bay by the decision of the conservation commission. I think first and foremost, they're going to have to decide what they need to make this work, if it can work, and to get on with some kind of a voted decision on it before we go. So, it's up to, it's up to you people, basically, what you want to do before we can get involved in the process that we have to go through.
Conservation Commission members have questions?
Have we gotten any specific guidance from DEP as to what their position is on the existing wetland?
Actually, I had a conversation, I've had two conversations with Joe Bolino from DEP last week, and Ms. Washburn has also spoken to both Joe Bolino and Marty Jalonsky at DEP. Both have given the same advice. It's a wetland. The four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet of the current replication area is a wetland. It doesn't, according to both of them, it doesn't matter that it's still in open order of conditions, it doesn't matter that we haven't granted a certificate of compliance. Ecotec, Brian Waterman, Ms. Washburn, all three wetland scientists, wetland specialists, professionals in their field, all three of them have called it a wetland, and everybody says it's functioning as a wetland. So, the advice that DEP has given is that it doesn't, you know, it's more than five thousand square feet, which is a discretionary amount that we can allow to be filled, and actually, that's reduced by the incremental filling that's already been done, the five hundred and seventy-five square feet, so it's down to forty-four, twenty-five. And, you know, although it was not said directly to me, the impression I got was that if we permitted this, then DEP may intervene. So, we're kind of in a spot here. I think, I agree with Mr. Roth, or it seems to me that the commission, the conservation commission, needs to decide, unfortunately, we only have four tonight, but I think we need to come to a decision on whether you feel that that is or isn't a wetland, and make a decision from there, because obviously, that's the critical point. I think if the commission agrees that it's in fact a wetland, then it would seem to me that the applicant and their consultants are going to need to revisit this and see if they can come up with a way to come in under forty-four, twenty-five square feet of bordering vegetated wetland alteration. And if they can do that, then I think we could issue a permit that would comply with the, with the regulations. But if they can't, if they don't want to or they can't, then I don't, you know, speaking just for myself, I, I, I don't see what else, you know, we can do. So, I would agree with Mr. Roth, that we need to figure out, you know, I think that they need some direction from us, and, you know, we need to make a decision, because there's no point, there's no point in even responding to all of the rest of the details in Ms. Washburn's report if we can't get past this issue. Do you agree?
Oh, absolutely.
Could, could they go directly to DEP and get a ruling on this?
The process is that we have, you know, the decisions are made at the local level.
Yeah.
We issue, when we close our hearing, we issue an order of conditions, which the applicant or any agreed party has the right to appeal to DEP. In this case, they would, they, they filed to DEP. DEP has seventy days to respond, to make a decision, and, and actually, I asked about that, too, because they told me the process would be that they would most likely uphold us because it's permitting more, you're asking to fill more than five thousand, which is a low. And the only alternative would be for you to file for a, a variance from the commissioner of DEP. So, it's, it sounds like quite a process, and I've never been down that road before, but, but that's the way the process goes. So, the bottom line is, to answer your question, you can't go to DEP until you've gotten a decision at the local level.
Yeah, I don't think about, I don't think a DEP, an appeal to DEP is ever advised, we don't typically advise that of our clients, it's time consuming, it's costly, and if the DEP's already weighed in, that these two officials or two staff in the Wister office is saying, you know, and the reviewer himself is saying, if he agrees with the commission's stake, then it's obviously moving on to the next step, or down to legal counsel at that point.
Right.
So, I think the best thing we can do is go back and talk to Mr. Massey, who can decide whether he wants to, you know, consider just walking away, or look at options where we realign the roadway to be farther to the east closer to the building, and, you know, we would make every effort with, to meet all the safety standards, obviously, any of the town standards that are pertinent to road design, and result in that magic number of whatever, forty-four hundred lasts, and then come back with a, with a revised plan.
I guess I'd like to hear from the rest of the board, because I certainly don't want to be, you know, the only person that feels that way, but I just want to know what you think.
No, I have to agree. All the printed material we've gotten from Waterman Design and historically has stated that it's a wetland, so who are we to say that the professionals are not correct in saying that it needs to be what it is, and it's outside of the bounds of the authority unless it's revised.
Yeah.
It seems like there may have been a window where the project could go ahead as the proponent wants it to, where this wasn't an established wetland, but it seems like that window is closed, unfortunately.
But it is a wetland.
It's a wetland, and I, I feel the advice that you have already received from DEP, I don't think we have a big choice. We have to go along with that.
I guess, you know, it's, it's too bad, you know, that everyone, I know H S and T, I recall vividly them telling us that it was the intent to acquire that, to relocate that portion of Eighth Avenue. It's too bad that they hadn't done everything as one project, as Ms. Washburn had indicated, because if you hadn't created that initial replication area of four thousand one hundred and thirty square feet, we wouldn't be in this mess, you know, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Unfortunately, you know, could, would, should, didn't.
A lot of things could have been done differently.
Right, could, would, shouldn't, right, you know, it is what it is, and now we're, now we have to deal with what we got, what we've got today, so.
So, we'll, we'll go back to Mr. Massey, and we'll walk him through what's been discussed here, assuming he's not sitting home watching it, and, and we'll ask how he wants to proceed.
Now, once you're over the five thousand square feet, does this throw this into the lap of the Corps of Army Engineers and the legal system?
You'd need, you'd need other permits. If it were, I don't want to know the gory details, but if you can prove that it's a limited project and exceed the five thousand, you need to get other permits.
Okay.
So, that would be, that was stated in one of, I think Ms. Washburn, DEP suggested that, too. Again, we disagree, but that seems to be irrelevant.
They'd have to file with the Army Corps of Engineers, and they'd have to get a four oh one water quality certification from DEP. And that would, in the only way the five, more than five thousand square feet can be filled is if it's a limited project, and this is not a limited project.
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't waste our time thinking that one through.
Any other planning board members have questions? Is there any public comment?
Just one question.
Could we just have your name and address?
Rob Johnson, Butter, thirty feet down. Can we get copies of Margaret's report and Waterman's?
Absolutely, it's public information.
How would we get?
You can contact, they're handing you their reports.
Thank you.
We need more copies, you can contact Sheila Conroy, our clerk, and she'll be, she can provide you with copies. There's a lot of paperwork from, from Waterman, too, but you can certainly get them through the office.
I gave them some.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Any other questions? All right, so, obviously, you're amenable to a continuance.
Yep, I think we have to. And I don't, I don't know that there's any, I think the only value in having a short-term one would be able, be able to tell you which way we're going, is if he decides to pack it in, and we can announce that the next meeting. If he decides he wants to change things, then there's some effort involved, but we could also announce that, so.
Can I just ask a planning board question? Where do you folks stand in your site plan approval in your process? How does this work?
Well, we can't do anything till we get confirmation.
That's right.
Right, but can you keep, is there a time constraint on how long you have to make a decision?
No.
No, okay.
That's.
No?
Partially correct, because the applicant has continued to ask for continuances.
Continuance, okay.
So, it's at their request, so it freezes the clock.
Does he sign in the papers?
And he, he hasn't been, but it's been at a public meeting, it's in the minutes that they have asked for the continuance.
He'll still get one.
Yeah, and so, I think that at this point, we're either going to have to do that, or we're going to have to ask for the applicant to withdraw until they've sort of finalized it.
You want something signed?
Yeah, a written statement. And, and I think, you know, there's a couple of ways the board can look at it. The board could theoretically approve prior to conservation, the applicant just wouldn't be able to build. Or they could withdraw, sort of finalize the conservation process and resubmit to the board, and the board could choose to take no fee on that resubmission in order to eliminate the clock issue. And I think that's something that the board would have to sort of discuss amongst themselves. I'm sure you'd have to want, you'd want to discuss that with your client.
If the concern is, I'll interrupt, if the concern is that there's not something written saying that they're, they're going to expect a constructive approval.
Yeah.
If that's the fear, then we'll ask them to write a letter. Either way, I think it ends the same.
Yeah, it ultimately ends the same, and I don't think that, I think that based on what the project is, you know, if they slide the road a little bit, that's not drastically changing the planning board side of it. So, we're essentially in a holding pattern based on the fact that the design could drastically change based on what the commission is doing, so.
Which was the whole point of having these joint sessions, so that we could all hear everything.
All our, all our decisions, okay, come through with conditions. The conditions, and one of the biggest conditions is that he has conformed with every other board.
Right.
Including you, you. So, needless to say, there's no sense in us going any further until this is straightened out.
I agree. So, if it's done through a withdrawal or through a continuance for so many months, that's.
If Adam needs a letter under continuance, then.
And I can, I can talk to Mike offline about that.
We can get a letter.
All right.
I mean, the place is certainly much better than it was before you people took over up there. Before, we had a criminal and picked that, now it's really a nice looking place, and this would certainly improve.
We're definitely looking to make it better. My question about, all we're trying to do is make it a better place.
And all we're, you know, and all we're trying to do is follow the regulations. But I guess my question to the planning board is, do you, do you want to continue to adjourn and have another joint session? Do you want to keep it separate?
I don't think that's, personally, personally, I would love the, I would love the conservation commission to do what they do best, and, and then we'll take, we'll take our portion from there. I don't really think, I think this was helpful, and I don't mind doing this if necessary. I don't think at this point in time we need to go back for another joint. It's up to the other members to say what they want to say, but that's my personal opinion.
So, it's entirely up to you. I, I think it's been beneficial to have both boards sit down together, I think it's, I mean, I know most of you, and I know all of you, but, you know, this is the first time you've met all of us, all of our board, and I think it's a great opportunity for you folks to understand our issues, and I really, and I said it before, and I'll say it again, and I truly mean it, I'm very grateful that the planning board has shown an interest in this and really is, is listening to where our, what our issues are, and I really, really appreciate that, so.
Through the chairs, if I might make a suggestion based on, on Mr. Roth's feeling. I had a similar feeling that based on the enormity of the conservation issues, the indecision on where it's going, at this point, it might make sense for each board to continue the hearing separately, find out what the ultimate decision is, and perhaps let the commission have one or two working sessions with, with the applicant where they're sort of moving to the point where they need to be if they do choose to go forward, and then maybe convene back together.
Together, yeah.
After, after they're getting closer to a point where they're ready to have an order issued, and if they've made alterations where we. to have an order issued, and if they've made alterations where we've had a peer review done for the board and sort of meld those two into one final sort of hearing or at least lead up to a final decision.
And I would think that once they've developed their plans further, you're probably going to want to bring Graves back in.
Correct. Well, it depends if they alter it or not. You know, if this turns into a bridge, yes. If they're moving it to the east, certainly. If somehow magically that doesn't become a wetland and the road stays where it is, I think us and Graves are sort of on the same page.
Okay.
Through the chair, I agree. I think the board, the commission needs to work on our own issues. As a board, I think we've kind of taken over the planning board process in the last two meetings, and I think, you know, I know they have a full agenda tonight, and I don't want to delay a letter or the board member themselves any further than they need to do.
All right. That being said, then, did you want to continue to our next meeting on August 13th with you?
14.
14. Did you want to continue to that? And so would that give you enough time to let us know what your plan is?
Yeah, that would make sense. Whether or not to go forward, we can always write a letter, even if we want to further continue.
All right. So is there a motion?
Make a motion to continue, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead, Maurice.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing until our next meeting on August 14th at 7:00.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion on that? All votes in favor?
Aye.
So, I'm not sure what you.
So you'd look for the 13th with us, which would be the night before?
Well, I don't, I don't think there's any reason for them to come before us before the public vote.
Well, if, I mean, if they're going to decide to pull the plug.
Well, we could always.
Yeah.
Hopefully, that's not going to be the decision.
Well, I guess from the planning board's perspective, they need to pick a date to continue to. So they certainly don't have to come on the 13th, but they need to continue to a date certain, or we're looking at re-advertising, re-noticing, and all of the fun that goes along with that, and the added cost to them.
When would be your next meeting?
It would be the 13th, the day before coming forward.
No, after that.
Oh, after that? Yeah, the 27th, and, you know, we just sort of keep going after that.
Why don't you go to the 27th?
Okay.
Oh, we came 27.
Can I ask you something? I work for the Spencer Conservation Commission, I'm their agent. They meet on the same nights you meet. I won't be able to come to the August 14th meeting. I absolutely can't miss any more meetings there. Sorry.
All right, we'll try to figure that out. Does the planning board need to make a motion to continue your meeting?
Make the motion to continue to the, to August 27th at 7:00.
Second.
On the favor?
Okay. Conservation Commission is actually going to need to recess to go across the hall to complete our meeting, so.
We'll make a motion that we recess to reconvene in the board of saplings room to finish our agenda.
Two, three, seven. All votes in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank all of you. Sorry to take it out of the bag.